Today is Monday, August 7th, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
Councilmember Bucelado?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
And Mayor Walter is here. At this time, we will rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and open up our first call to the public. Call to the public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed upon a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noted for discussion and legal action. At this time, Ms. Garcia, have we received any calls to the public? If you're online and wish to speak, please go ahead and indicate with the hand emoji. At this time, we'll go ahead and -- Mr. Beatty, come forward, please, and thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please refrain from hands on our employees, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and all council members. I just wanted to thank everybody that attended the casino night the other weekend. We had a great time, a great turnout, and I really appreciate your support. I hope everybody had a good time. I know I've heard a lot of good things about it in both social media and the newspaper, and hopefully, we can continue to use that momentum and kick off the fall with a lot of great events. Also, this Thursday, if you're available at 11 o'clock, LG Homes is having their grand opening again. We're going to welcome to town officially with a red ribbon, and would love to see you all there. Thanks so much, and have a great night.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? I do see Ms. Courtney Ramirez. If she would like to go ahead and unmute her at this time.
Good evening, council. I had a couple of questions that I was hoping I could get answers to. Nothing particularly on the agenda, but questions. I understand that staff was going to be working on the noise ordinances with possibly modifying and adding to them, and I understand that that was going to be on an agenda back in July. And it's now the first meeting in August, and I'm wondering if that is still on the agenda? Because a lot of people are concerned and have a lot of complaints and things like that, so I'm just wondering if that is still on the agenda anytime soon to be discussed. And I would also like staff to get back with me on -- I know at the last planning and zoning meeting, staff had asked about the ADOT permit for Highway 287 for deceleration turn lanes at 287 going into Centennial Park. That four-star promise was days away of getting that permit, and it's been a couple of weeks already, and we are just wondering if that permit, you know, if they're in the process of doing that so that that work can be done. And I would also like a timetable if there's anything in the works about that, because we are all still very worried about that intersection with all the traffic coming in and out for that construction. And as far as we know, nothing, there's nothing in sight for that safetiness on 287 and that permit and getting those turn lanes done, so I would also like answers on that, and that's all I wanted to ask about at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramirez. What I'll do is I'll give direction to the town manager to coordinate with the appropriate department heads to follow up on that. All right, I do not see anybody else, either in person or online, so we're going to go ahead and close the first call to the public. Moving into our presentation and public hearings, this is presentation of the Outstanding Employee Recognition Program for the month of July 2023 to Alicia Mafaro for her outstanding contributions to the town of Florence. Alicia, Ms. Isfaleez, and Mr. King, and council, can we go over to the area, please?
All right, so I want to start off with a little bit of background. So this is our monthly employee recognition award. Every month, an employee is selected by their peers, and it goes in front of the employee incentive committee, and all of the referrals are read, and the committee discusses them, and they select the top nomination. You'll receive a certificate and a $75 gift certificate to any business restaurant of your choice in the town of Florence. Mr. King, did you want to kick off by saying something?
Sure. First of all, I watched Alicia work all summer long. I got here in late, mid-April, and since then, she was entrenched in summer planning with aquatics and sports and just the intensity that she brought every day and the teamwork effort. We were just talking about this earlier. Her teamwork effort is awesome. She always, she doesn't take public speaking well, so we're going to ask her for a couple words, but that's about it. But thank you, Alicia. You've done a great deal for our department this summer and year round, so, and we greatly appreciate you.
Allison, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Alicia knows how much of an asset she is to our department. Working with teenagers is, can be challenging at times, but she does her best to communicate with them and mentor them, and she's done an exceptional job this summer, and we're very proud of her.
I'd like to share the nomination with you. I would like to recommend Alicia Mafaro for the Outstanding Employee of the Month Award. Alicia always goes above and beyond. She is an integral member of the Community Services Department. She oversees many areas, including but not limited to the fitness center, sports program, and the aquatic center. This summer, Alicia has put in countless hours to make sure that the aquatic center is running efficiently. Alicia stays late and works weekends just to make sure our community has a positive and a fun experience at the pool. Alicia successfully manages many parts of the part-time staff member program. Her staff always is well-informed and on task because of the staff members seamlessly work efficiently together. Alicia is a great mentor to the teenage staff members that she oversees. Alicia takes great pride in what she does, and she leads by example, making sure that her areas of expectations are known due to her high standards. She maintains great professionalism with her coworkers, her staff, her community members, regardless of the situation. She gets the job done even when there are obstacles in her way, and she rises to the occasion to overcome those obstacles to make her program successful for the community. Alicia deserves to be recognized because she is highly valued and makes the town better by choosing to work here, which I agree wholeheartedly with everything that your colleague has written about you. You are an asset to our town, and we're thankful that you're here. Would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say thank you for acknowledging myself and giving me this opportunity.
Item B is public hearing to hear citizens' comments regarding a proposed establishment fee for trash-only customers and possible adoption of Resolution Number 1873-23. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, adopting a new establishment fee for customers with trash-only services effective September 7th, 2023. Mr. Carl Dudding?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. On July 3rd, council approved a change in town code, thus adding establishment fee for trash-only accounts. This public hearing and action request is to set that fee. Staff is recommending a fee of $20. This fee will mirror that of the establishment fee for water and trash customers. If approved, this fee will be effective September 7th this year.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, this is our public hearing. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up public hearing to hear from our citizens. If anybody is online, please go ahead and raise your hand. And closing the public hearing at this time, thank you very much, Mr. Dudding. Item C is presentation of the Florence Economic Development Video produced by Penile County. Mr. Russ Martin?
So, what's that?
Mayor, can we go back to the other item? It was for possible action as well?
Okay.
Oh, you are correct, and possible adoption of Resolution 1873. Thank you for that oversight. I do not have my glasses this evening. All right, that being said, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1873-23. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Mr. Martin, now you may proceed to item C.
Yeah, I was going to say, are we done with the first one before I jumped in? So thank you for doing that. Like what's happening in Hollywood, if it wasn't for all the people behind the scenes, it doesn't look as good. So the only reason what you're about to see has any merit at all is because all the work that was put in, again, Jeff with the good words, those didn't come from me, and with Harvey's input as well, those are the words that came from that team. I just was fortunate enough to be here in time to put a face with it, and after several takes and me being a diva, we got through it, and ultimately, with what the county and, and I can't remember, was it Mark or the gentleman that put this together? Fantastic guy and easy to work with, so I give kudos to everybody else. I was just fortunate to be a part of it. So hopefully with that, we go ahead and go when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Town Manager Russ Martin. Great things are happening here in Florence. We're poised to grow considerably in the years ahead. Eldorado Holdings recently purchased over 4,000 acres for a master plant community near Anthem with 12,000 homes and new industrial, commercial, and retail components along Hunt Highway. Additionally, Pulte Homes, Dr. Horton, and LGI will be completing over 700 residential lots throughout Florence this year. This dramatic growth has spurred new interest and revitalization efforts with the Irish Cowboy Pub and Birds &amp; Bones Barbecue, both redeveloping buildings in our historic downtown district. Also, Florence Copper is gearing up for full-scale environmentally-friendly copper production, bringing jobs to Florence and Penile County and critical resources to Arizona's fastest-growing industries. This project represents $258 million investment in our economy and will generate 250 jobs locally when their facility is complete in early 2025. Finally, Florence is proud to be a hotspot for live music and regional events like Country Thunder, which attracts more than 30,000 visitors and residents daily, and the Junior Prada, the oldest junior roadie in the United States. With so much happening and on the horizon, we invite you to swing by and discover Florence.
All right, excellent. Item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A is approval to donate a display unit from the Vining Jones Library to the Florence Unified School District. B, authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement 2023-01 with Penile County, allowing Florence Police Department to participate in the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission Grant Number DC-24-009 and accept reimbursement of employee overtime costs and related expenses. Item C is primary property tax update from Penile County. Florence corrected rate is .9990. Item D is approval of Amendment Number One to the Florence Brand Standards Guide. Item E is approval to purchase traffic signal from Sierra Transportation using the Maricopa County Cooperative Purchase Contract 200125C-MCDOT TS Poles and Components in an amount not to exceed $64,000. Item F is approval of the June 26th, July 3rd, and July 17th, 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes. And item G is to receive and file the following Board and Commission Minutes: Community Services Advisory Board Minutes of March 9th and June 8th, 2023; Historic District Advisory Commission Minutes of April 26th, 2023; and Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes of June 1st and June 22nd, 2023. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there any member of the public or council that would like any item removed at this time? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
Make a motion to make the consent agenda present. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight, new business. A is the first reading of Ordinance Number 728-23. This is an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the town of Florence, Penile County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII. Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto by annexing 37.091 acres of land comprised of Penile County Assessor's Parcel Number 200-24-009H. It's also referred to as Parcel Two in Sections 25, T4SRAE of the Gila and South River Basin Meridian, Penile County, Arizona, which is contiguous to the existing Florence town limits on three sides, establishing 37.09 acres of single residential ranchette R1R zoning effective September 21st, 2023. There was a public hearing held on April 17th, 2023, and it was reference number Annexation 202301. This evening, we will have Mari presenting for us.
Just a second. You know, it's a scroll. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I bring back the annexation for Adaway Crossing. The landowner, Adaway Crossings, 147 LLC, they are the owners, the only owners of this land, and it's currently within Penile County. So all around it, you have Anthem and/or parts that are within Merrill Ranch. This part is outside the county, though, but I highlighted it in red just so everyone can know where it is. Approximately 37.091 acres. We share three borders with it, which allow us to annex it legally. Our public hearing was conducted on April 17th. A 30-day waiting period with the public notice period has ended, so now it can move forward. And I've also got the signature from the single owner on the annexation petition. It is currently zoned general rural in the county, and it will be transitioned into single-family ranchette. The owner intends to rezone it in the future. The rezone application you got in the packet is old and no longer applicable to this annexation because Sun Communities is no longer looking at this land to turn into a manufactured home community, but the owner still wanted to annex it into the town, but he'll rezone it later once it's, the annexation has been done. So the next steps is, this is the first reading, so action will be taken tonight, but during the second reading, since an ordinance is with this annexation. So after the action has been taken, the next step would be another waiting period of 30 days, and then the annexation will be filed with the county's or court's office if the action is to approve the annexation. So a vote no would deny this ordinance, and a vote yes would mean adoption of the ordinance to annex. However, tonight, like I said, is not for action, but just for the first reading. Are there any questions?
I do not see any.
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Item B is discussion approval/disapproval of continuing the sanitation rates as adopted in fiscal year 2022 with an annual review to be completed in 2024. Ms. Becky Jimenez?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council, on April 3rd, we came to the council with a requested increase for sanitation rates and fees consistent with a serconomy rate study that was done in 2022. But during this time, during this meeting, some modifications were made to the customer for services that impacted the sanitation fund, and Town Council has requested a review of the sanitation fund. So that is attached to you in a form of a white paper. It's very comprehensive, and we are very, whenever we do studies like this, we are very, we try to allow for errors and to make sure that we get enough expense in there so that it presents a fairly good picture of what's going, could occur if costs increase at a 10% rate, or if your sanitation customers do not come in as originally planned for this year. So in doing this, we normally, under these circumstances, if we were working for profit, trying to keep up with the cost of services and trying to create a profit, I would be recommending to go ahead with our rate increase. But initially, whenever we entered into having our sanitation outsourced, we had a pretty healthy fund balance, and as you can see, that fund balance now is starting to come down based on our expenditures versus our revenues, and that's okay. We had a healthy fund balance. So what I did was, we projected out to years '26, '27, and at that time, with our, the way that we presented it, we feel that at that point in time, it'll hit about a $500,000 fund balance. And at that point in time, you're going to want to reevaluate this again to see if this is the direction you want to go in, if you want to start increasing fees a little bit. But for the current, we're going to recommend that we go ahead and continue on with the established rates that we have right now for this year. It's $19.08 per service, and next year, we're going to do this exercise again to make sure we're still on track and how adding additional customers and additional revenue, how that will come into play. You have to remember also, there are contracts that we have to adhere to, and some of those have rate increases built into them, so those will also be evaluated as we are going along. But for this year, we recommend that we stay with our current rates if council approves.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we need a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is discussion approval/disapproval of ratifying a short-term contract with Right Away Disposal, a division of the Waste Connections of Arizona to be effective July 1st, 2023, for continuation of solid waste and recycling services based on the current scope of services, rates, and terms as defined in the Solid Waste Services Agreement between the town of Florence and Right Away Disposal dated June 6th, 2023. Mr. Carl Dudding?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, staff is requesting a short-term 90-day service agreement with RAD. This agreement has no changes in current services or pricing. Staff will bring forward a new agreement on September 5th for council's consideration. The new proposed agreement is for three years with three additional one-year options. The new proposed agreement will be utilized in the town of Queen Creek Cooperative Agreement with RAD, and again, there are no changes to services or pricing utilizing the cooperative. Staff did reach out to another local service provider and requested cooperative pricing based on our current service levels, both trash and collection. The pricing for the same services would have raised our rate of 1908 to 2756. We are aligning our trash collection contract expiration date to fall in line with our landfill contract date. The goal, future goal is to publish a single RFP and hopefully find some synergies through single contract. Originally, staff intended to solicit those, both contracts in January, but with the escalating prices on our landfill with our previous contractor, which we discussed in February and March, we moved forward with a single RFP for landfill and a single tract for our residential collection services. It was my intention to bring this item before council in early June. I missed that mark and plan to bring the new contract back on September 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Dudding. Council, do you have any questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve to ratify the short-term contract with Right Away Disposal. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative report, Mr. Graves.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Last week on Monday, the legislature adjourned this year's legislative session after passing the Prop 400 transportation bill for Maricopa County, as well as a repeal of the residential rental tax, which was part of the agreement to get Prop 400 through, through the legislature, that is, and onto voters in 2024. Both bills were signed by the governor, as expected. However, many communities were unhappy that the two issues were linked and that the governor ultimately signed the rental tax repeal, which she had vetoed earlier this year in February. Collectively, the Joint Legislative Budget Committee estimates that the repeal will cost cities and towns about $230 million annually, beginning in 2025. Fortunately, Florence does not collect a significant amount of rental tax revenue. We average about $100,000 annually, so town operations should not be impacted by this cut. However, we are seeing that the revenue trends and the state surpluses that we've seen over the last couple of years may be ending as the impact of Governor Ducey's income tax cut cut is starting to be seen in the state's monthly revenue numbers. If the state does find itself in a hole next fiscal year, the legislature may look towards cities and towns as an outlet to shift costs or reduce shared revenues to help fill that gap. So, we may see a variety of finance and revenue-related bills next legislative session if that occurs. Despite those risks, the league is hopeful that they can work out some kind of revenue replacement plan next session to help offset the impact of the rental tax cut before it takes effect in 2025. In terms of wrapping up this session, the league is working to complete their new laws report, which should be ready shortly. Most of the new legislation will be taking effect at the end of October, and there will be a variety of items going to the ballot through the legislative referral process in 2024. Finally, regarding the league's focus in the off-season, similar to last year, zoning and housing affordability will again be the primary focus since this year's housing compromise with Senator Kaiser unfortunately fell through. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Council, do you have any questions? I don't see any, thank you, Jeff. Town manager report?
Yeah, so, in a minute, hopefully, Vice Mayor, we went last week to see Ms. Sinema, who graced our area, was in Casa Grande, so I'll let him kind of go through that. But I do want to follow up. Today, I was with the managers in the East Valley, and much of the conversation was much about what you just heard from the legislation that was passed and hopefully ultimately dealt with, with the 400. So, appreciate that, so I won't take any more time there. I will say that ultimately, I had a great time, and I appreciate that this community has events like the Casino Night. I think that brings out a lot to me. It provides what I was excited about coming here for, and again, appreciate all the work that goes into those things. That's tremendous amount of work, and I appreciate the partnership with the chamber. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Department head reports, does any member of council have a question for any of the department heads? And this is our second call to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak at this time? Call to the public is open. If you're online, please raise your hand. Closing the second call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Maldonado.
I would just like to say, recently, we just had a new cooling center open up here in Florence. It's on the outskirts. It's the Santan Veterans Center. So, if you know of any neighbors or anybody that doesn't have AC and needs someplace to go cool off, that's a great resource right there. That's all I got, thank you.
Councilmember Buchalato.
I just wanted to say again, thank you for the chamber for hosting the Casino Night, and it was a great time, and I think it's nice for us to get out there and mingle with the residents and kind of build those relationships and that rapport with them. And I also wanted to say, thank you to everybody that put in for the Florence Memorial Park Ad Hoc Committee. We had a great number of applications come through, and it makes me excited that so many people genuinely care about that. So, just wanted to say thank you.
Councilmember Neal.
First off, I'd like to thank Florence Fire. Never in my life have I ever had a, my alarm go off for the, what's it called? Carbon monoxide alarm went off in my house, and Florence Fire showed up and professional, just to the point, they got it done, handled. So, I'd like to just tell them thank you very much. Second off, our outstanding employee award. I would really like council to just make that $100 instead of the 75. It's going back to the community. We should be giving $100. It's an outstanding employee. I just think it should be $100. So, I'd really like us to sit down and think and talk about that and do that. Went to the fire chief, and I really don't envy you at all, Town Manager. It's a hard decision. Everybody spoke well, and that, man, best man win. And finally, I would like to actually thank a council member, Mrs. Michelle Cortez, for, I said thank, thank, not blame, thank, for actually always helping me. Any questions I've ever had, she's always been right there. Even during, when we were talking about the fire chiefs, just her knowledge and experience and just when we were discussing things, just she helped me out in every way about candidates and what we discuss and this and that. She's always been there for me, so I'd like to really give you a big thank you for being a mentor on the council. Other than that, that's it, thank y'all.
Councilmember Cortez.
Thank you. I promise, I didn't pay him to say that. I just would like to say that I too went to the Casino Night. It was a blast, but it always is. We always have a great time. The chamber knows how to hold an event, for sure. And just hope that, you know, I've been talking with staff members and with our town manager about things that I would love to see us improve on. Things have really started to become clear as to why maybe some of the things that, especially when it comes to see it, click it, fix it, however you say that, see, click, fix, whatever, and just the general maintenance and things like that, some of the things that I didn't realize might be hindering us. And so, hopefully, we are all in the process of coming up with some new organizational flow that will help not just one department, but will help all of us within the town, citizens and staff, and hopefully alleviate a lot of the stress that everybody's feeling from, you know, always feeling like we just can't get ahead. So, hopefully, that stuff is coming forward. Our town manager did a great job with his introduction of the candidates for fire chief, and I wish them all the best of luck. And I truly believe that no matter who gets picked, it's going to be a great choice because they all three were great candidates, well-spoken and knowledgeable. So, I look forward to seeing who gets that position. Council does not pick that position, just for clarification. We have no say in that position, just like we had no say in who our police chief was going to be. Other than that, I hope everybody has a great weekend. That's it. It's only Monday.
Councilmember Larson.
I think a lot of the things I was going to speak about already said, so. Casino Night was fantastic. I did have a lot of people requesting that we do similar activities, so I know they're very eager for the summer months to pass and for events to start sparking back up again. So, otherwise, everyone seemed to have a great night, and it was a lot of fun.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Well, the last couple of days have been very busy. On Thursday, I went with our town manager, Russ, to meet with Senator Sinema regarding the transportation issues in Penale County. Very informative meeting. We had Senator Sinema helped to author a couple of bills that passed and are out there for us to use for transportation infrastructure. One of the things that she stressed was that we start working on some joint applications with different municipalities within our areas. I did let her know that we were working with the county to work on Hunt Highway and possibly the county and Coolidge working on Ataway. I did let her know that we do need some help in those areas to include the 287, that we need some improvements on that, especially that we're going to have all this development coming. So, that was very exciting, and it's nice to know that that money is out there. We just got to get with the other municipalities and county to try to get some of those dollars down here to Florence. Today, I met with Governor Hobbs, Chief Walz, and Jeff, we all attended that one. There's a, it was a border security roundtable with the governor. Some of the things that we brought up was the, the drugs that are coming in from the border, the illegals that are being dropped off in the southern parts of, of, south of our town, up in the copper, or cactus forest areas. It has been, well, let's see, we had a bunch of police chiefs up there. We've all, all the towns that were represented did get some money from the state. We ended up getting $1.2 million grant for some communication devices so that we can keep our officers safer. I was told that we were running with a system that's not as new as what everybody else is using, and we're going to start working with the county a little bit better, and the county's going to work with all the municipalities within the county to try to improve those systems. Hopefully, there's more money that the state can bring forward and help us smaller towns out. So, I really enjoy being out there and representing us out there, so thank you.
Thank you for attending those meetings, too. Everything has been spoken of, so without further ado, we do have an executive session this evening, and we need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session? Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.